Okay, would anybody like to talk about anything on the agenda as part of the privilege of the floor? If not, Lou, why don't we start with the reports from you down to your end?
The only thing I can report on is that this storm has put a little dent in trying to get back to doing blacktopping because, you know, we have a few roads that are on the -- that were supposed to be blacktopped, but right now, even if we can get to it, we got -- we don't even know if the people that are going to do the, you know, the reclamation on it are available because their schedules are all off. So that's the biggest dilemma that's facing the Highway Department. Every day it seems like there are other things that are popping up that have to be fixed and corrected that wasn't obvious at the beginning. So other than that, the senior center is doing well. Rentals are down and Dollar Bus always does great. So I don't really have a lot. I talked to Broderick beforehand, so.
Good. Okay, Kenny?
Yeah, I'm going to repeat basically what Lou said. This storm has made the water and sewer department guys crazy. They're working a lot of hours trying to catch up on road damage, pump damage, and with the help of Brad, the Highway Superintendent, they're making headway, but it's going to take a long time, a lot of damage due to the result of that storm.
Okay, George?
Okay, the joint rec report, I'll get a copy to you for Silla so that you don't have to write all of this stuff down here. The Zumba classes are starting on the 27th, seven, 6:15 to 7:15 at the CJ Hooker Middle School. Drama Kids is also starting on Tuesday, the 27th. Adult coed rec volleyball is going to be starting at the CJ Hooker Building on October 6th. And the events that are coming up, the annual Halloween event is scheduled for Sunday, the 23rd at 1:00 PM at the Solishen Park.
The 5K Turkey Trot is scheduled for 11:19. And of course, you could always visit the website, gochinrecreation.org for more information and further information on any of those programs and other things that are happening. Still with JRC, there is a Friends of Goshen Parks that meets once a month. It's a new program, a new group that's starting to try and raise money for the parks. Anyone that's interested in doing that, I don't have the exact date, they move, they come back and forth, but they meet once a month at Village Hall at 7:00 PM. Supposed to be getting the budget relatively soon and passing it on. We had a reorganization meeting and Trish Sherlock was again nominated as the chairperson for the JRC. Kevin Armstead, we see, Coke, actually say Coke, it's the assistant chairperson to Trish Sherlock. That's JRC. And then as far as insurance is concerned, we have, we're getting new quotes from other organizations, other insurance companies, but one has come supplying information, getting information from our gym and the bottom from upstairs, we do that today. We also, also getting further information together for the insurance quote for 2012. That's our general liability. And I would also stress, I had a call today from an adjuster that wanted some information. And I just stressed that it's very important that we give the insurance companies the right information. Case in point is, I guess if it was blood damage, it's not covered at all, depending on where it is, and we have a $25,000 deductible. Whereas if it's backup drains and lights, we have a $1,000 deductible, most of this covered. So it's important to, I guess, say the right things to the adjusters. And I think that's all I have as far as my reports.
Good. Thank you. Bill?
Well, with the police, there's been very little activity, but we did get a letter from the attorney for the PVA demanding a meeting so that we can talk about staff. Obviously, it was a discourteous three-line letter, and we responded, what do you want to talk about instead of meeting us? So I'll give you the word to come. We've got another response, but we don't know what it's about. It's very curt, very short, and it's just not the way you do business, in any of my opinion. As far as what we have been doing on financing, we've had a number of preliminary budget meetings. We expect many, many hours. We're, I'm sure Doug will elaborate, but we're very, very concerned because the governor has announced a 2% cap, and our medical insurance has gone up 14%, and our taxation has gone up 6.6%. All the expenses that are annual expenses have gone up, yet we are capped at 2% or 1.6%, which is the CPI. So we did make a trip to Albany, I think Doug will elaborate on that, fill it in yesterday. We wanted to speak, we wanted to discuss this whole thing because we have a huge shortfall in the budget caps. And I know that our town is probably two or three weeks ahead of the curve. We start, or we start early, but we don't know what the other municipalities do. We're struggling with this budget, so stay tuned. That's what's yet to come.
Good. Okay? Good. Well, first thing I'd like to do is comment on the officers with Joint Recreation.
How much?
The Trish Sherlock and--
Kevin.
Kevin Armstead. I can't give them enough credit. They're just wonderful people, giving you their time. To all the other board members out there as well. And I was on the Joint Recreation Commission in 2005 and '04, '05. Kevin was there then, he'd been a long time to that. So they, these people put a lot of time, continue to put a lot of time, and I think I, they deserve our best. There was a water line leak or break in Arcadia Hills last week. It was Thursday. Occurred about 1:00, and they had it fixed and bumped it up by 7:00. What it was is evidently 20 or 30 years ago, there was a leak, and they put a tourniquet on it, fixed it properly, but they put in steel bolts versus stainless steel bolts. The steel bolts rusted through and things broke back open again. So it could have been avoidable, avoided if it was done right the first time many, many years ago. We did go to Albany yesterday. We've been talking to Senator Larkin and the legislator, me and Rabbit, about the budget and our concerns. To give you an example of what we're dealing with, okay, the, how we're going to be at 2%, which is the state, New York State law says 2% or CPI, whichever is lower. And as Phil alluded to, medical insurance has gone 14.2% next year. It's going to be approaching $18,000 a month, I mean, so $18,000 a year per employee. So just opening the door, walking in, take all the points we have, it's $18,000, $17,000, whatever the number is. And so when you have something going 14.2%, how do you get to 2%? Contract we have with the police for this coming year is 3.5% plus a corresponding wage increase, plus 3.5% corresponding benefit package. Whereas the holidays, the vacation days, no personal days, they all get 3.5% or more next year. We, Workman's Comp is going up 6.6%. And as we alluded to on Monday, we're doing well. We're only paying 88% of the premium because we've had such good performance. Some municipalities are paying 100%, some are paying 100-plus percent based on performance. So if you don't have injuries, your rates are lower. If you have injuries, your rates are higher. It's 6.6%, even though we're doing better than we've ever done, which is at the 88% tile. The retirement, 4.2%. And you go on and on and on, and none of them are approaching 2%. So what do you do? You have layoffs, or you have furloughs. What do you do? And, and so anyway, we've been working hard on this. And I'm going to tell you all, folks, we got it down to 2%. It's not a pretty picture. Not pretty at all. It's not pretty for the employees, and it's not pretty for the citizens. As one example, or a couple of examples, in Highway, we have $125,000 this coming year for equipment replacement. We had to take $100,000 out of it, so you have $25,000 to replace equipment with in sweet our size. How do you do that? Another one is we go, we have $350,000 in the budget to put down asphalt, and we had to knock it down to 160. Well, how do you get enough asphalt to cover 73 miles of road for $160,000 to do your maintenance, your annual maintenance? Well, if we follow the New York State law, we've got to do that. So Phil, who was a finance commissioner, I said, we want the Albany to find out from straight to the shoulder. How are we going to do this? Guys and gals? And I looked at three blank faces. The one guy who skews himself in a meeting after about five minutes, he knew what he was talking about, but he had to go to a conference call. And the other two, we got information from them, but not the leadership I was looking for. So it is what it is. We're working hard on it. We're going to try to be as fair and equitable to everybody, employees and citizens, right? And we'll just, but I have to agree with the state legislature and the governor. New York State is not competitive. Just go to other states and you'll find out how cost competitive they are. Well, we evolved out of this line of evolution of high, 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 high. We've got to bring it back down. We bring it back down, I guess, by starving us. And there's going to be a lot of squealing in the process. And I don't feel good about it, but we are working hard on it, and we're trying to, again, be fair and equitable.
Just, I'll just answer that, Doug. I mean, you might as well. What we understand is, or we find out is, that they're starving us or really cutting us down so you can almost not exist. It appears that the master plan is to get the municipalities to merge, so there's no duplication of effort. And this is a thing that's very, very difficult and very difficult for people to understand or want to do. Because they just want to, but, but the governor apparently has really, and this is just the new information that we're getting, he really pulled up his strings and said, we want to merge municipalities. Well, you have two DPWs, two police departments, two this, two that. You can cut out a lot of the duplication. In private industry, that's what they do. Not saying we're going to do it or not do it. I'm just telling you that it appears that the motivation at that particular point is for villages to merge with towns and probably ultimately towns to merge with counties. And I'm not giving you any facts, but we talked to some of the legislators, and this is what they're thinking the direction is. They're pretty confident. So this is all new. This is a whole new, new age. But you know what? Drastic steps should be taken and must be taken in order to get everything in line. People are losing their homes. People are losing their jobs, and it's, it's a very difficult situation that we're facing. But we'll do the best we can.
Okay, thank you. Which leads, we are, we're going to go to New Pulse on the 3rd of October for some training by the state on this 2% cap. There are one or two things that we can, for example, exempt from the 2% calculation, but many of them aren't. Like the 14.2% in medical insurance, you've got to swallow, digest it to deal with it, you know? And so we'll look at all of this, and, and we're talking to other municipalities, and we're just trying to ground ourselves in as best we can. But what in essence it is, is a recession beyond common negotiation as it has all along. We're now probably getting the same mode as some of the other states have been having all the fisticuffs of over, you know, with the unions and everybody else and the schoolteachers and firemen and whatever, you know, like Wisconsin and other places. I mean, it's kind of coming this way because New York truly is not competitive. Back about nine months ago, there was a company we had that was, they had a code for it. They didn't tell us who they were until they turned us down. I mentioned this on Monday, but the press today, I'll say the same thing again. We went out to a piece of property and they want, this company was looking to build a one and a half million square foot building and create 1,200 jobs. It would have been in the town negotiation. Well, and they looked at the cost of doing a business in New York State, and they said adios, and they went down to Berkeley County, West Virginia. And that building is well underway in construction, and they're taking applications for these 1,200 jobs. Why is that? I'm going to tell you right off the bat, I'm still hosed off about this. Workman's compensation in New York has been out of control since. I was managing two private businesses for the Dupont Chemical Company, one in Kentucky, New York, and one in Danbury, Connecticut. Both of those plants, the company that I worked for, were shut them down, moved and lost to taxes. You cannot, in New York State, have a labor tense business, manufacturing business, and deal with workman's comp. It'll put you right out of business, okay? Now, you can have a service or whatever it might be, but a real manufacturing facility with a lot of repetitive motion, whatnot, it's very difficult unless you make a lot of profit, like an IBM or some of those others. But any mom and pop business is very difficult. And until the state legislature gets a hold of that and a few other things, more of the same.
When this board took the posture of, we're going to live on a cash basis, we'll pay as you go or we don't go, and that's five years already. We have not borrowed any money, no debt. The easiest thing for you, for a municipality to do is you have a shortfall, you bond in something, when you borrow it, or you raise the tax rate. But if you don't want to do that, then you talk about the income and revenues that may not materialize, but you put them in there. But we have done none of that. And I want to tell you that this, this date, we are so far ahead of the curve financially. And if we're in crises, and we can't even imagine what the other municipalities have got, this hard board and very fiscally responsible, we can't even imagine. People are going to run out of money. They're going to go after the budget really in six, six months, they'll be out of money. So it's very serious.
Yeah, what Phil was saying, we haven't borrowed money for operations.
Right.
We borrowed for a water line and sewer, and a water district.
That's a special issue.
And then PDR, which people say you've got, you know--
That's five years ago.
But that was five or six years ago. But yeah, we've paid off about a half a million dollars a debt a year for several years. It's dwindling down now because it's being paid off. And we owe less, certainly enough than $4 million. And they're probably, I don't think any other municipality can touch that kind of thing. Okay, the next thing is, we, Phil and I are also negotiating actively with the CSEA, and we made an offer. Yesterday?
Yep.
Date before you.
Yes, they were enrolling.
Okay. And, and we'll see. I did talk to the union negotiator today, and it's a tough sell with the employees. And I said, well, I understand that. But we're, we're in this situation. We have to cut $855,000 of our budget. We only have a seven and a half million dollar budget. It'd be at 2% given what bogey we're looking for. It's difficult. And if I didn't like this kind of stuff, you know, it would even be more difficult. I budget it every year all my life in private, and I just love doing it. So, and Phil's a financial guru, he knows about finances as well as anybody, and so we're working on it. We talked about, pursuant to what Kenny was saying, Lou was saying on the hurricane, and then Lee after that, we had a sewage backup in the records room and also the pit below the elevator. And we didn't know it until we went, like, wait, that's, that? We opened the doors, oh my goodness. So we had several inches of raw sewage and whatnot in the basement. We pumped it out, and sewer company come and pump it out, and we had Syrup Pro come in and disinfect everything. And as luck would have it, the Christmas decorations were on the top shelf, the tax records were, were defiled itself in the soup.
At least we said Christmas.
So we said, Chris, we're going to have a great Christmas, and, but anyway--
Nobody's going to tax you.
But anyway, we looked at the tax bills, and we have duplication in the county, so they're history.
Yes, Senate courts can't get taxed this year.
Right. So anyway, that's my, oh, I did go out and meet the governor this afternoon. He was out at the Black Earth Area Goshen on Maloney Lane. He talked to the farmers and had a whole barrage of municipal leaders and politicians and whatnot. But New York State was extremely involved in the, the hurricane and the drought and the storm there, lots and lots of damage. And some of its worst, Goshen, the town of Goshen, other than the farmers miserably, we, we've taken a lot of hits, but nothing compared to some of the municipalities. And we're going to talk to later tonight, these two culverts that were damaged, it would be $371,000 to repair them. FEMA gives us 75%, we've got to chip in the other 25%. That's on top of the 2% burden we've got with, so I don't know how we're going to get it done, but we're, we're going to get it done. But we did have a lot of damage. Okay, the first entry item, old businesses set a public hearing for the request by James Dill to rezone the Currie property. Dennis, do you have anything on that?
I do, I have a letter correspondence, but I don't have a copy of the petition. The letter referred to it, but I don't, I don't have a copy.
I dropped five copies off.
Not to me.
No, the judge.
Okay.
I mean--
Okay. Yeah, please. Yeah, that was, I don't know.
Well, why don't you lead us through this thing, Dennis?
Yeah, no problem.
Set the public hearing.
Yeah, oh yeah, that won't anyway delay the public hearing.
Let me explain to the public what we're reporting.
Yeah, okay, no problem.
Yeah.
Yeah, we were aware of it from the last presentation that it involves a parcel out of Hartley Road, which is presently 60% RU rural zone and 40% commercial office of excuse. And it's the desire of the property owner to have the entire property resold industrial. And I guess you all had a copy of this, because the material I'm looking at now--
No, I don't.
I have, I got a copy of it last.
Okay. Okay. But go ahead.
Again, attached to the petition is a map of the term parcel, which I assume you have.
We saw this.
We saw it.
Yeah. It seems to be all in order. It'll be, again, the property owner having to subscribe to the application and petition. The appropriate procedure would be to establish a public hearing, date at which time any interested parties, neighbors, et cetera, could come in and make comment if you want.
Our next meeting is the 11th work session.
The 11th or the 13th?
You want to advertise it in time for the 11? Or should we go to the following? What's the meeting later in the week?
13th.
13th would be better because Val says we need a good three weeks to get it in.
Okay. Okay. Someone like to make a motion then? We set a public hearing for the request to rezone the Currie property in Hartley Road for 7:30 or soon thereafter on the 13th of October 2011. Any discussion? All papers say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Is the board going to send the application to the planning board? Because they review it at the same time.
Yeah, we will forward that to them.
We forward it to them.
You're also going to have a notification requirement to some of the surrounding properties with the applicant's response.
If you would, just talk to Neil--
Yeah.
Make sure that he gets all what you want him to get and that the appropriate mailings are sent out.
Yeah, coordinate with him.
Okay.
And since our last discussion, is there anything new?
Nothing then.
Okay.
We was saying, I just filed the petition. Dennis just, I guess, didn't get a copy. I dropped off five copies.
Yeah, I, yeah, we got them.
Yeah. But if you're caught five off--
You were too early, that was a problem.
I was too early.
Oh, yeah. That nails, that's from yesterday or day before. Good.
Okay.
Very good. Thank you very much.
We're set it.
Dennis, are we ready at all on any of these texts or should--
No. The short answer is no, but we have to see the court judgment yet. As the board is aware, Matroc and Excelsior are both settled. We don't have the consent judgments and stipulations as yet.
We'll do it on the 11th of October.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, oh yeah, but the 11th, we certainly should have had that.
Okay, good. But they're settled.
They are resolved, right?
Yeah.
Okay. This next one, did you get the information from Mr. Sweeney?
Yeah, we did. Both items four and five are joined, if you will, and we have the materials, as does the planning board, you know, killing going office of risk. We're, we're in the process of reviewing them. They have not been signed all right. But then they, they will certainly be done by--
I told you guys it'll be a short meeting tonight. Now, will we be ready by the 11th or 13th?
Yeah, because they're physically in hand. It'll be, they appear to be all in order. It's just that there's probably 50 to 100 pages of rather detailed material, which we have to compute against maps, et cetera. And they appear to be in order, including, as you know, some provisions in those easements to protect the people in Hamiltonian Park, et cetera. So we're presently reviewing them, and by the 11th, certainly.
And also the expanding the Hamiltonian Water District?
Yes, I didn't think that was appropriate until we've obviously approved the easement.
Right.
I have a question about that.
Okay.
I think I have a question for Dennis, I guess. Apparently, it's now moved to the signing of the map, when the money will be transferred to the town for water and sewer. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Initially, it was going to be when we actually did this, right?
Or when you really have been signed.
Which, you know, the sooner we get it, the better. The only thing is, I want to make sure is, is that when the map is signed, whoever's signing that, was that chairman of the planning board?
Correct.
That, that they have the checks there--
Yes.
That day.
Yeah.
That it's part of the signing of the maps, that these two checks written after the town negotiations are delivered that day. It's not like, well, we'll get, we'll get it to you.
Checks in the mail.
Because I'm concerned about what's going to happen long-term with this particular project.
Yeah, I agree. And I think the board appreciates, that's also one of the reasons why, again, you're not doing resolutions tonight, easements, et cetera. Because they're making progress certainly in, you know, performing their punch list and completing the requirements in the planning board. I just don't know if they're moving on due lack of speed. And then again, we're seeing to it that they are. Yes, a point we'll take.
Good.
See, we're closing on a house and stuff, right? You have checks to be put in.
Oh, yeah. Absolutely.
Keys to the house.
In fact, I would, I would, if you think about it, as you know, they've appeared here many times. I would think there's really no reason why they can't be ready with all this stuff, you know, so. Now, I don't know what their plans are or their timeline is.
I talked with Neil about the signing of the maps--
Going through it next year.
--and their list of things to contain.
Right.
He said they're working on it, and he said it's not too far from the signing of the maps.
That's my understanding.
Now, the reason why I'm really anxious to get that water district approved, because that's the one that's got to go to the health department--
Revised.
And I don't, is that going to hold up signing? It probably will.
Minimal.
Okay.
Because see, the health department knows it's coming. The health department knows that there's going to be an expansion of the district. And they've been, you know, affirmatively told that it's a fait accompli, other than a formality. And they're ready to review.
Okay, very good.
Yeah. Yeah, no, again, I'm not in any way criticizing the applicant.
No, I'm not either.
It's just, you know, they have things to do. If they would just do that, we could get this thing buttoned up.
Okay.
But it's their timeline.
Well, that's why I can be.
You can have shorter meetings if they're just finished up.
This is pretty short now.
No, but they are, heavy and short.
It's their timeline, you know.
Would someone like to make a motion to approve the minutes of work sessions, August 22nd and September 6th, and the regular meeting of August 25th?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any additions or corrections to the minutes?
Yes. I have two. I think they're minor, but since Dennis, you addressed this issue at our last meeting, I think it's important. On the minutes of the 25th, we went into executive session for PD personnel. You had said that PD personnel is not sufficient. It has to be a specific name.
Or job title.
Or job title.
The more details in that.
Right. So, I think that was chief of police.
It was.
It was. It was so designated.
Right. And the six, so that should be added.
That should replace the 25th.
And then on the 22nd, same thing. PD personnel, chief of police.
Right. Good. George, any other additions or corrections to the minutes? All papers say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Under new business, just pursuing what I was talking about with the Hurricane Irene and the tropical storm, please. Hartley Bridge, I mean Hartley Road, or should it be Culvert? And Coleman Road Culvert repairs. You can see in your packet here from Sean Hoffman and Dennis Lindsay to me, well, it says Hartley Road Bridge and Coleman Road Culvert. If you go down to the repair costs, FEMA estimate for repairing it is $371,413. The FEMA Public Assistance Program provides supplemental reimbursement for the repair and restoration of the infrastructure. Reimbursement generally 75% federal, 25% non-federal local share. So, now, the local share is typically split between the New York State and the municipality. We have briefly discussed the funding with Highway Superintendent Knoll, and believe it may be possible for the town to use the force account of labor and equipment, excavating, hauling, traffic control, so forth, to cover our 12.5% share. So, basically, this is informational only. I told my review with you tonight. I don't see any option for us other than to fix these things. Except this culvert, if you look at the picture in there, Hartley Road Bridge, I mean, it's, well, they're all pretty dreadful-looking things. And they have to be fixed, as far as I can see. On the Coleman Road Culvert, that was a great big culvert that we did last year.
Yeah.
Last year.
No, that wasn't last year.
Isn't it?
It was three years ago.
No.
Time flies.
Yeah, it was. Anyway.
It was actually built right there.
Anyway, the, the water went underneath the bottom of this culvert. It's got a horseshoe-type of thing on top with metal bottom. And water went under the bed of this thing, washing it out, so the culvert is twisted. And this, I mean, it's big. It's, you know, say it's tall as a room, but it's big.
It's the size of a two-car garage. The height is about 10 feet.
Yeah.
The length is about 25 to 30 feet, and the width is probably close to 20 feet. That's what it is.
Now, Dennis, we don't need a motion on this to authorize it.
No.
Okay, fine. Was I, it was just kinda informational that, you know, it's one of those things where you put money into something that's already done once.
George?
Yes, Doug, I just wanted to comment on this, please. I didn't have an opportunity to really study it.
Okay.
But the 371, 411.
Yeah.
As I read it quickly, it seemed like that was just Hartley Road Bridge.
Is it? You see, I didn't read all of this.
So, if it includes, you know, all of the things, if that's the figure, there was also a third issue there. And I know there are some constituents that have come into our meeting. And that was specifically named the unnamed tributary, which is on page two.
Oh, that's Run, Run Creek.
Right. The tall linear foot portion. So, I guess what I'm asking the question is, is are they basically saying that we should be applying to FEMA for all three of these things, including the unnamed tributary to the apple? Because there's pictures in there at all. As I said, I didn't have a chance to study it completely.
No, I didn't either. I mean, it came in late today.
Right.
And I, what I, I did talk to Sean, and he said there was, you can see it here on page five.
Right.
There's a tree or something we can snag out of there. He was not looking to do much beyond that kind of thing when he talked to me. There's just no dredging, there's no, no major work on this at all.
I think George's point is, is well taken, though. If you look at the Coleman Road Culvert and the repair summary, they do recommend a review with FEMA, et cetera.
It just has no dollar amount.
Right, it has no dollar amount. I mean, I think, George analyzed, I think those comments apply to each and every one of those projects. They should be FEMA-qualified.
Right.
And the first estimate, 371, is just for Hartley Road.
Except that you're not sure. Because it says the FEMA Public Assistance Program provides supplemental reimbursement for the repair and restoration of infrastructure.
Right.
I don't know.
But there's no further recitation on repair costs throughout any of the other.
But we're talking about infrastructure.
I understand.
I think they're right. I think this is inclusive. Yeah. It's all infrastructure, and then they break it down. Only based on what it costs to put it in.
That's what I said. I think when we get Hartley Road, I would think around $90,000, most of the $70,000.
No, no, the Coleman, Coleman, well.
Probably Hartley one.
Yeah, well, I was talking to Coleman.
Okay. About $90,000, from my recollection.
Coleman was the actual culvert, about 72. We got a grant on that, and that was built on site. I think it was 72, Martin Davis, a grant.
Well, anyway. We will have to get to Sean on this. But I think that in terms of the Runboat Run Tributary, when I talked to Sean in the hall, he was talking just about staying trees, and people were not gonna rut their drenched saw trees and all those things.
It really, it comes down to a lot of the time and the effort that the DPW has, right, Lou?
I didn't hear that.
It comes down a lot to the time that the DPW has in order to do these things, because, you know, they basically have full-time jobs doing what they have to do every day. However, the positive thing about is, it looks like, if I'm reading this correctly, that there wouldn't have to be out-of-pocket monies spent by the town, because the 12.5% that's our responsibility, it would be done by force account.
Yeah.
So, if we could combine these types of things and do, you know, some of the.
Well, that's what we did last time, when we got grants. We were trying grants that we did with our own people.
Right.
But anyway, but this just shows the magnitude of what has been broken. I mean, this is just two. We had many, but one, one hole on Coleman Road took 200 tons of scum to fill it in inside.
I don't know what it cost to fix. What's the name of the? Hartley? Coleman? No, the one near me. I'm listening.
Oh, Canyon Hill. Oh, Cotton Town Road. Oh, yeah, yeah.
Something called John, Bill Council Lane. I don't know what it took and how much dirt they had to put in, but they did a tremendous job. That must have been a tremendous cost. That's just one road. The whole road was gone, they did fix, just beg. He's very busy, did a great job. I don't know what's this, but.
One of the things, well, it's gonna hit, and this is one of the things that are concerned, why we put it all together yesterday, is we spent a gazillion dollars preparing things when Irene came through, and then Lee came through a week later, or whatever it was, and did it all and did it for the most part. And we had to do it again. And so, and they're still working on it. Still working on making sure the roads, the integrity of roads and such, that school buses and all of ours can be safe.
Doing a great job.
Okay, well, anyway, this is just information for us, anyway, tonight. It seems like we've got some questions as to what's included and what. And we'll certainly work through that. And Lou, if you could get with the Broderick and make sure that it's, he understands what it is, you know, in his letter, and that we get the money accordingly. Okay, very good. The next item is under finance. Would someone like to make a motion to authorize a supervisor to pay accounts payable check run of September 7th, September 20th, both 2011, amounted to $152,612.62. An accounts payable check run of the 22nd of September 2011, amounted to $272,570.78.
So moved. I'll second.
Any discussion? All papers say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. So now we can offer a privilege of the floor. Anybody's talk about anything they'd like to talk about.
We've got a.
I'll get that.
Play for you. Joel wants to get the picture. Step right. Joel wants to get the picture. There you go. Excuse me, Joe.
My name is Kathleen Petrovic. I live at 8 Meadow Brook Lane. When Irene came through, my backyard and several of my, several of my neighbors got flooded out as well. I understand what you're saying with the budget and the monies and the DPW, but quite honestly, in the short run of it, is that I'm a taxpayer, as are all my neighbors. I know that there's issues. Everybody's going through a tough time at this point. But quite frankly, I'm really pretty tired of hearing about the resources and the DPW's busy. It makes us residents feel like we're not important to this town, like we're secondary, and that there are so many other more important things to do. The truth of it is, that every resident in this town makes up the town. We all deserve something. We all deserve respect. And we pay taxes. And we came to this town because we were told that it was a good family town, that people were nice, they had a good education system. And I moved up here approximately six years ago. And let me tell you something. In those past six years, boy, did I get an eye-opening experience. At least where I came from. Even though there were situations and issues due to budgetary cuts and so on and so forth, the residents were always taken care of and not treated as second-class citizens. And I don't know if it's just the way it's coming across, but it seems that my neighbors feel the same way. And I understand that you're working on things and whatnot. However, it's the attitude that comes across that's really negative, and that people within the town do get frustrated with. And it's really a shame, because everybody, before I moved up here, had told me what a great town this was. And to be quite frankly with you, over the past two or three years, I'm not experiencing that. And if I could sell my house and move right now, I would. Because this is not the type of town that I want to live in and have my daughter grow up in. Again, I know there's situations. I know there's budgetary cuts. I know there's a lot of things going on. But you know what? You don't treat the people who pay taxes and the people who live in the town as second-class citizens. It's just not right. It's just not right. And that will carry with people more so than the good, because if something's good, you tell one person. If something happens that's negative, people tell 100 people. And then the bad reputation gets out. So, I mean, and now tonight, we're supposed to get at least three or so more inches of rain, which means that I'm probably gonna get flooded out again. I know you have to do your thing and work through your processes and whatnot, but at this point, if I could do something myself, if I could go to the government myself, if I could clean the creek myself, if there was anything that I could do so that I know for in fact that things would get done, I would do it. Because I just don't have the trust in this town or the people who work for this town to get things done. And I really don't think it's fair. And I know that tomorrow morning, when I wake up, if we get all this rain, I am going to be flooded out once again.
Okay, thank you for your comments. Anybody else? Jerry?
Will you book that up?
Please. Boy, you don't have to. I mean, you're welcome.
Every time I hear Hartley Road, it's like a toothache to me. I can remember back when Frank Lomano sat up here, and Hartley Road became an issue due to the condition. Frank went out there with one of our attorneys. This is when always had that operation. And if I can recall the figures right, they wanted the town to kick in, I believe, $80,000 to repair that road. And Frank and I discussed it. And I said to Frank, "I wouldn't give them any sense. They destroyed the road." That road is in now the same condition. I was through there the other day. When you bring up this issue about the culvert, well, I'm wondering how much damage was done by those trash trucks coming and going over that particular area? Because this is exactly what happened. And I was wondering if brought it to the town board's attention, that they were running these trucks from Harness Estates loaded up with shale. I don't know if anything was done with Harness Estates to attempt to get them to pay any kind of funds, because I'm sure they had something to do with the destruction and the collapse of the Coleman Road. But that's past history. They're not doing it anymore. My other question is, how is the enforcement going with the garbage trucks that are going into IWS? I see different names on different trucks now that I've never seen before. I think Absolute Karting was one. Well, I just wonder if they're not just changing the names as they do in the garbage business? And are they applying? Have we had any new applications? And what is the enforcement? How much enforcement has been done by the police department for unlicensed karters? I know that's a lot to digest.
Priscilla, could you, that second question? Since you've issued the permits?
I don't know what the police department end of it is.
Right.
But in the town clerk's end, we do issue the licenses to the karters. And I must say, a lot of them are very cooperative. If they change trucks or take a truck off the road, I had one today. It was, I forgot the name of the group, but they, they took a truck off the road, wanted to redo another truck. I issued them another license. They, they cooperate with our office. And I believe that's probably stemming from maybe pressure from the police departments. They don't want to get a ticket. Whatever goes on, I don't know at that other end. As of this date, we have sold $14,750 worth of licenses to Carter and haulers. Last year, we sold $15,849 and change. And the reason for the drop of that was two businesses sold out. They conformed anymore. They dissolved their companies. And another couple just felt they weren't gonna be here enough to merit getting the license. That's all I can speak to.
That's up from zero.
Or...
That was up from zero until you brought the issue to us.
Well, it's amazing. Any other board I brought that up to, they all looked at me like, well, why?
Well, that's what I call...
But there is a money flow here. And we are in tight, we are in a tight situation for money. And this is a way to get money. Because I'm sure we are not getting a lot of the licenses, licensees that are coming and going. Because you'll have some that perhaps run off from '84, dump, and then back out again.
I can say this about the police. I know they stop trucks. They were stopping trucks the other day on the road that they had permission to be on, but they said, you're not supposed to be on this road. We had an emergency thing from the county executive, Texas trucks and other, other trucks that were going to Texas Place for, for materials. So I do know that they stop trucks when they see them. And these placards that are on these trucks are pretty visible. They see a garbage truck anywhere around there, doesn't have this placard on it, they're gonna pull it over. And I know they have. And that's chape, early on, chasing people in to get their, their license. So without being definitive and giving you numbers, I don't know what they are. I don't want to tell you more than I know, but I know they have been doing it.
Well, I, I think it would behoove, behoove the police department to every once in a while do perhaps what we'd call a fixed post.
Right.
And as these trucks come in to dump, and they're in there, in and out of there every day, and there's a lot of them, this is perhaps a, an area we can look into for finances, not only for the police department, the budget, and, you know, the town general fund as well.
Now, going back to your first question, Interstate Waste approached Robert Knoll talking about going on a joint venture to work on that road. This is a little bit back before the storm...
This is the same act that they did with Frank.
No, this was, I mean, they approached him versus approaching anybody else and said, okay, because they, so I don't know, I know Bronderick right now is buried in other things, but I think this is on his, his agenda. One thing about Bronderick, he writes everything down, works down the list. He will be looked at. But I wrote it down here to remind us that...
My position would be this as a taxpayer, okay? I don't think we should give them anything. They are the ones that are destroying this road. There is big trucks every day, in and out, in and out holes. And I also said this to Frank. I, as a town taxpayer, object to this. Because all I'm doing is help them fix their road to get access to their dump. Well, you want to be a good neighbor? They weren't a good neighbor when they refused to give us tipping fees. That's still somewhere off. Didn't Mr., I can't remember his name right now, didn't he tell us they would consider it?
Oh, yeah.
Well, you know what? I would consider, perhaps you should fix the road. Not you, IWS.
I wrote your comment down.
We had approached that too, which was in the past.
Because I don't think they're good neighbors, in my own opinion.
At one time, they had volunteered, or that was part of the negotiation, that they were going to fix the road. But then they backed off of everything, the tipping fee, fixing the road. And frankly, that's almost a private road. So I understand where you're coming from.
You're correct.
Perhaps...
Yeah, very few cars use that. And they'll be the other way because of the roughness of the road. But I think they're getting interested in the fact it's too rough for their own vehicles.
Yeah, oh, I hope they don't break it. That would be terrible.
That's what it is. And now they're starting.
I wrote it down. I hope you can figure out where we go. Jerry?
Is information on this project available? Will it be available at the...
What project?
The clerk's, uh, this curb on Hartley Road.
Oh, the zoning change?
For the public, so people know.
The zoning change?
Yeah.
Yeah. We've got the information.
So it'll be there.
There'll be a public, if she likes to put it in play.
Well, I mean, it's agreedably for a public hearing.
Give it to Priscilla, she can get it to you.
Is there anything further? Just the zone change and what they're anticipating doing?
Well, part of the petition recites that they have, they have the...
Molging.
Molging compost.
Yeah.
They operate a place in Jersey now and are looking to displace that place with their operation up to this particular area.
And most of that area is only industrial. It's like almost a dependence that isn't. That's the farce that they would like. It's out of the way, and it's irritable. It's a very...
It's adjacent.
It's very irritable.
How many acres?
Very small.
It'll be in the, but I, we, they came here a week ago and worked. But I think what you'll find is it's adjacent to the O and R. It's all industrial out there. It's a rather well...
Is this that piece of property, as you go across the bridge to the left, to the right? There's a for sale sign. I think it says 38 acres.
Good thing.
Yeah, I saw the guy on that before. He had a little, he had a little flowers type of thing or nursery curb.
Luzon Gardens.
Pardon?
Luzon Gardens.
Yes, yes.
I didn't even know that.
Absolutely Luzon. John Luzon.
Right. Move out, move out. This is saying on the cover sheet, we have 31.18 acres.
I'll pay it for the old man. It's only seven of them.
But anyway, the information on that is in the...
Now, is this owned by IWS now?
No, no, no. It has nothing to do with IWS.
It has nothing to do with IWS.
But the Kerr family owns it now.
Okay.
And Mr. Dillon is the engineer representing the potential buyer who, who wants to buy it and put this business on it. And so he's got to get rezoned to be in a position to do that. They reviewed with us and it seemed to make sense.
They were here and we discussed the whole operation. Very little use of the infrastructure and these...
Joe?
He turned it off on me.
Oh, thank you, Jerry. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Poured it into the wall.
Just for whatever it's worth, you may not have caught it today, that the House voted down the continuing resolution for funding for FEMA.
Yeah.
The Republicans are playing politics with the FEMA fund there.
Okay.
And I'm sure that will play out, but as of right now, they don't have the money to complete their obligations.
When the governor was here today, he talked about a billion dollars' worth of damage in New York State. And the state came up with $15 million for the farmers. And it's just tokenism. And he said, it's gonna take federal money to do this and put it back the way it needs to be for, otherwise, a lot of farmers will not be able to recover. So it is a serious problem.
Could, could you, you could give us an update on the status of the negotiations on the IMA and the arbitration?
I'll let Dennis, from a legal perspective...
Yeah, they're, they're progressing. Yeah, we're still engaged in it. I mean, I think we're making progress and we hope to be able to resolve it. Sometimes they're not too distant.
It's getting close, man.
I, I got the feeling from the meeting the other night that there's actually an IMA that's beginning to take shape.
That's fair to say.
Is that fair to say?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, details are not...
Is, is it also fair to say that all of the issues are interlinked at this point and will only be resolved as a package?
Not only.
Yeah, I believe so. Yeah, universal settlement is our report. So we just hope that's what's gonna be.
That's what we're looking at.
That's what we're working at.
Yeah. But the arbitration is not for the universal settlement itself.
That's correct.
It would like to, it would like to do it. We would like to do it. Everybody's on board, but, you know, it could still be solved in pieces if it adds to it.
That's also true.
Okay. And could you also...
I'm hoping by October of 11th and 13th that we're gonna have something to share with the public. I don't know.
Yeah, certainly October would not be a realistic...
I mean, I think that it's maybe that close.
We'll see.
Excellent, very happy news. Could you say anything about that situation that I referred to Monday night with the drainage covered across the Old Minnesota Sink?
Right. I, the woman involved, the lady, Gail, wanted me to call her back, and I said, will we discuss it here? And I called her back with the information that I gleaned from our meeting. So it's, it's between her and the village, from my perspective. And, but in essence, in essence, the records that she has don't share any studies or whatever of the village, those buildings that were going on in the village, the new subdivision, whatever they were built, putting that water onto her property. And that there's, it's what they call artificially directed. If you've got a stream coming through your property, that's why Mother Nature does it. But if I build a subdivision adjacent to your property and I artificially take all my runoff and put it in your property, that's, that's an issue.
Right.
That, and then the other issue is, is the raw sewage that was getting into that, going over onto her property, so...
Well, that's what I was curious about, as to whether or not the town was gonna get involved in the issue. Or if this is gonna be a private...
We, it's village water, village sewage, and it just happens to run under a common road where the middle half is ours and half is theirs.
Which was put in there by the village.
Right.
I went out there tonight, just before the meeting again, and I remember when I was on the board the last time, they had tremendous water coming down the streets right where they put that pipe, and it would back up, and the whole thing would ice up, and it became a very, very big hazard. And it was, it went on for a number of years. But it was a very dangerous situation. So I think that's how the village cured the problem. They pointed the water in a different direction and sent it someplace else, and that was the cure. But, you know, I think the sewers and stuff was really the issue now. But that's...
Smells like litigation to me, but...
I don't know. I mean, I think that there's a common head for veil, they can work this out.
Yeah.
But, you know, it's like everything else.
And I, I found it just very interesting from, from a legal point of view as to what the relationship of the two municipalities was. You know, I'm learning something every day.
Meaning that there was no dialogue.
I'm sorry?
Meaning that there was no dialogue.
No, no, it seems that, that your, your boundary line runs right down the middle of the road. You've got what amounts to effluent from one municipality being piped into another, and I don't know, you know, I'm ignorant of the law here. I was very curious to see where this would come out.
Well, I think, I truly think that if that family will deal with the village and one or maybe the mayor, and they can kind of work this thing out. But...
There must be precedent for this sort of...
It's absolutely actionable by the property owner.
It's actionable. Okay. Yeah, I would think. You can't have sewer jobs in your property.
Right.
But, you know, I would think.
So in my mind, effectively, because I went out there too.
And I've been out there as well.
What must have happened here is there was an existing pipe. The pipe failed in some way, shape, or form, and a new pipe was put in. And of course, now with, you know, that's...
They're, they're contesting that assertion.
Well, I thought there was.
From my memory, right. From my memory, it's...
They put a pipe in to alleviate a problem. The village put it in. But before that, there was a problem because there was no pipe.
Right. So now if they put in a new pipe into that area, the other one must have failed and potentially maybe they...
That's what the village is contesting.
Maybe they put a bigger pipe, and of course, on top of that, you know, we had the hurricanes, so we had the, the fluid from the sewer, and now you have a mess.
Well, as I say, it's an interesting question, whether or not any municipality has the right to direct water onto private property.
It's not much of an interesting valley, though. It's any property owner. The case law is absolutely prison ringer. Now, I don't know what the maps show. I don't know what the village has done historically, but approvals they obtained, et cetera. But you cannot artificially divert water so as to impact a neighboring property where it might do damage. I don't care if it's a municipality or an individual, you can't do it. They're very common amongst neighbors.
Yeah.
You know, you come in, you blacktop your driveway, you dig a ditch, plant trees. Again, depending upon ramifications, you've got to be aware of what happens with the runoff, et cetera. And you cannot do that. It's what they call actionable, but it's a basis for a legitimate lawsuit if the parties cannot resolve it.
Yeah, I would think. Okay.
Well, I have one other question.
Sure.
Interesting what you brought up before about Governor Cuomo and his remarks about consolidation.
No, it's not his remarks. We've got, and it was from Phil, we've been discussing with the legislators, and it appears, okay, that with this 2% tax cap, because they believe New York State is not competitive with other states to bring in business. And if we could sell our homes, we'd be out of here tomorrow. Okay? Taxes at the school level, county level, state level, town, village, whatever, fire departments, all crippling in its geometric progression. When you start compounding, you don't have to go up too many years and say, well, you know what? It's over. They're beginning to see that. And so they're saying that by putting this cap on, it's going to force our hands to live within a certain amount and take draconian steps to live within 2%, which will then perhaps force municipalities to merge together to eliminate... You can no longer clip and snip, like, oh, well, that person's retiring, I'm not gonna backfill them. That's not gonna cut it. You're gonna have to eliminate maybe one whole board and one whole member of leadership and one whole list, and one building and 16 cars and, you know. Then all of a sudden, you're going to get real savings.
This is a subject that I discussed with Bob Weinberger four or five years ago, that the former mayor Weinberger believed that there was a plan afoot in Albany, in the legislature, to combine all of these different townships, perhaps hamlets, villages into one government, maybe being run by the county.
Right.
And what this produces, this is what Bob and I had discussed, this was his thought, it produces a centralization of government where you, the town of Ocean, you lose control because now you're gonna be governed by perhaps two bodies. One being the county, if that's the way it goes, or the legislature in Albany. So it makes it much easier for those two identities to force on us their edicts. And it takes this out of existence. Exactly. That was my next. And it does away with home rule. I don't like it. It has a bad smell to it.
Yeah. Well, I mean, and a lot of people, I know when I went out getting petitions to get on this fall's ballot, one person that I went to said, I want you to understand, I want my village.
That's right.
I said, hold on, listen, I'm not saying not one way or the other. I'm willing to pay for it. Well, this person maybe has the money to pay for it. There are other people who say, you know, I can't, I can't. You put one more burden on me financially, either from the fire department, the sewer, the water, the town, the village, whatever it is, the library, I can't pay one more cent program to move out, and I can't afford to move out because I can't get the equity out of my home. We have people, a lot of people, folks.
But if you're a centralized government, that's not gonna change.
Well, I can't, I can't even discuss it, you know, intellectually, because I don't know what they've got in mind. I haven't seen any plan or anything else. All we're saying is, is that this could be an issue in New York because this cap, New York State law, is, is, they're just like this $371,000 bill. Well, you know, if you got to put 25% with it, or whatever it is, 10% with it, where's it coming from? Now, we do have a lot of duplication of effort, and we can. And we, you know, we've got joint recreation, we've got the joint senior center, we've got things like that, and they're working well. But there, there are other things that are kind of the untouchables. No one can go there.
Right. DPW, you wanna fuck, I don't have a place for them, please. That's right.
Sure. And, but anyway, you know what now, what we know. We don't know a whole lot, except the 2% cap is going to be something to really give a lot of thought to, not the cap itself, but how we can live within that and still provide the services that people want and deserve at the same time at a workforce that's, that can afford to stay here as well. I mean, it's, it's a balancing act.
Is there a difference between the municipalities and the schools in terms of the process that's necessary to override the cap?
Well, we're going to this course on the 3rd of October, as I can tell you, and I think, yes, there is a difference. We, for a municipality, don't quote me on this, but you have to create a local law, you have to have a public hearing, that we allow this board to vote beyond the 2% cap. And if we got 60% of the board to vote for that increased amount, then that would be the budget. With the school system, it's my understanding, is the public in general will have to approve anything above the 2%. But again, I'm, I'm just, this is what I've heard in the street, what I believe from them. I don't know if anybody else in the board can reflect on this.
I have the same information that you, you have to establish a law first.
Right.
Well, I believe, Doug, it's Albany that has made us less competitive for these big companies with the laws they've enacted, with the tax structures. But somehow Supervisor Newhouse in the town of Chester, he's been able to figure a way out. He has brought, and his predecessor has brought in major companies, CNS, Pep Boys, and they do, they got another outfit coming in. How is he doing it? Somebody ought to sit him down and say, Steve, could you tell us how you're doing it?
One of the things that is...
He was there before he ever got...
That park was long, long before.
But, but, I mean, here's one...
No, no, no. Jerry? Son of a war. Yeah.
Jerry, I can tell you, in the town of Ocean, we're 52% taxes exempt. That means 48% of us pay the trade.
No, we can't even get, we can't even get a supermarket. And all these pollutions, "We're going to get the supermarket." And everybody sits there and gets elected.
But it's not their job.
What do we got, a bodega?
But Jerry, that's not their job. It's not the job of government to bring in the supermarket.
No, it's not. Oh, oh, what are you taking me on? What's the matter with you?
Okay, well, anyway, it's a great discussion. If you're still a part of the model, the way home, and we pull out to a hole, we'll continue. Okay, folks, thank you very much. We still would like to make a motion. We adjourn the meeting and go to executive session to discuss the status of super arbitration negotiation of the new IMA and discuss the status of CSA negotiations. The intent not to...
Second. You can never do this under centralized government.
Huh? Do what? All papers say aye?
I said, you can never do this under centralized government. Well, you know what holds in New York, though? You know, like what's Albany? It is the...